Good evening, and my phone shows 1,800 hours. So I'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission to order Tuesday, February 21, 2023. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty for all.
Thank you. We have the roll call, please.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Welcome, new planning commissioner, Ryan Carter. Vice Chair Fran?
Here.
Commissioner Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepper?
Here.
Commissioner List?
Here.
Great, we have a quorum, and yes, I would like to echo welcoming our new and returning commissioners. So, we have no closed session report?
We do not.
Okay. Item four, adoption of the agenda. Due to a few logistical issues, I'm going to request a motion to reorder the agenda, advancing item 12.1, which is the tentative subdivision map, CCNRs, in advance of item nine. Could I have a motion?
Motion to advance item 12.1 to prior to item 9.1.
Great. Second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections? Seeing none, we will so order the reorder the agenda. Adoption of the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar considered routine and will be enacted by a general consent unless any commissioner or a member of the public would like to pull the item. The item we have under consent calendar is item 5.1. Do any commissioners have issues or questions on the minutes? I do, so I'm going to request that the minutes be pulled. So that will conclude 5.1. I don't know if any members of the audience have anything with regards to the minutes. Seeing none, we'll advance to item six. So, on the minutes, Pierre, this might actually be for Kristen, but I'll just bring it to your attention. Let's see, on the second page, she's already back, which means if we would like to return to our regular order, we could. Having said that, under Roman numeral two, recommended that the city council, the new language, almost at the very end, it says, "which requires staff to develop and adopt objective review standards." I believe we need the word "two" in there, "to mitigate public safety and health risks." Do you see that? So the new, the brand-new language, Roman numeral two, item two, it says, "inherit in our community which requires staff to develop and adopt objective review standards," and I believe the word "two," T.O., should be in there, "to mitigate." All right?
Yes.
And then, one other question I had on this. The minutes are technically correct, but if we go to page five, and under dwelling unit, and this is an important item, dwelling unit, item D, includes an efficiency kitchen. And in several places, it talks about an efficiency kitchen as defined. But one has to dig, at least I did. I had to dig all the way to page 13 of 20, under item C, large C, seven, D, kitchen, A, J, A, D, U, and it provides a definition for an efficiency kitchen. Okay, it's there. It seems to me that the efficiency kitchen, which is a relatively important item that clarifies or qualifies these things, should be its own definition in the definitions section. Is there any reason why we could not move that, copy that language, an efficiency kitchen, to the definitions section that starts on, I don't know, page three or whatever? Technically, it starts at the bottom of page three, and just put efficiency kitchen in right before guest quarters?
Staff's only comment to that would be typically in the definitions section of the zoning ordinance, those terms are to apply to all sections of the zoning ordinance, where in the case of, if we have a particular section or subsection of the zoning ordinance that's speaking to a particular type of use, in this case, a junior accessory dwelling unit, where under the state codes, we allow what's called an efficiency kitchen as opposed to a standard kitchen per the building code, we would want that definition to reside within that subsection of the zoning code and not, not apply to the rest of the code, because it only applies to the junior ADU. That's why it's done that way.
Okay, so that makes perfect sense. Can I, could I then ask, okay, under dwelling unit, on page five, efficiency kitchen is also listed there, right? That's, I think, the first place it shows up, efficiency kitchen, page five, under J, A, D, U. So then, could we not provide a reference then, right past that C, as in S.E.E., C, section whatever, where the actual definition is provided? Again, my point is simply that someone would really, they just have to really dig, wade through all of this before they can actually find what an efficiency kitchen is. And I understand your reasoning for why you put it where it is, Pierre, but can we somehow help people get to that definition quicker? Does that make sense?
Yes. Vice Chair Fran, you said you found?
The definition is on, what did I say?
Page 13.
It's on page 13.
Page 13.
It's on page 13, D at the top, so there it's listed, right? That's the first time the actual definition of the efficiency kitchen appears, but we talk about efficiency kitchen before we get there. So, understanding the reason why you didn't want to put it in the definitions section, that's fine. Can we not, as soon as efficiency kitchen shows up, or anytime it shows up, simply refer to this other section where it's defined?
Yes, we can certainly do that.
That would be great.
Yep.
Can you show my, on page 13?
Right here. Oh, oh, right here. The very top, D, a minimum, an efficiency kitchen which includes all the following.
So then, on page, page eight, oh, I'm sorry, that's efficiency unit, that's different. I'm sorry, I thought that would cover your concern as defined by the California building code.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. So if we, and so they can do that, so there's two changes then, the one staff will make and the one I asked to be made.
Yeah, Vice Chair Fran, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hunter just pointed, pointed out to me that that section is the more encompassing section of our zoning code, so that's under 10-1-4. Therefore, under the junior unit, junior accessory unit there on page five, we should, we should include the full definition there.
There.
Under D.
Okay, great, where it first appears.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's fantastic.
So we will add, we will do that change.
Okay, terrific. Any other commissioners have any changes to the minutes? Could I get a motion to adopt and accept the changes as presented?
I moved that we adopt as changed.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, great, thank you so much for that. So then, we will go ahead and move on to, item six is completed. Item seven, items of interest to the public, public comment, items that are not agendized. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on items that, which may be in the commission's purview, but are not specified on the agenda today. The commission will take no action on anything that's brought forward to us, and we will limit your time to three minutes. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission this evening? Seeing none, item eight, written communications, a non-agendized item. Do we have any written communications?
We have no written communications this evening.
All right, thank you. So then, we will continue then with item 12.1, under our reordered agenda, assuming the council, the commission still wishes to proceed that way, since we have the document back.
Yes.
I'll just leave that. Okay, fine, then we will go ahead and go straight to the CCNR, item 12.1, which is the tentative subdivision map, TSM 99-02-E2, on the Estonia Estates Residential Subdivision, consideration of the draft covenants, conditions, and restrictions. And Pierre, I believe you have the staff report.
Thank you. Let me give a little background. Estonia Estates was approved by the city council on October 29th of 2001. Estonia is a single-phase, 38-parcel, single-family residential subdivision, consisting of a single parcel totaling approximately 37.2 acres. This subdivision is generally located north of the Placerville Airport, south of Tikserna Court and Broadway. The current developer of the project has completed most, if not all, of the tentative map conditions of approval, and has submitted for approval to the final map. The map expires on February 27th of 2023. Staff is conducting its final review and preparing to take the final map to the city council for approval. This action by the city council is what we call a ministerial approval, meaning there is no discretion, as long as the conditions of approval on the tentative map are met, the city is then obligated to approve the final map and allow the applicant to then complete the final map, work with the county surveyor, and have it recorded, thus creating the, the individual lots. Condition of approval number 18 requires that draft covenants, conditions, and restrictions be submitted and approved by the planning commission for review and approval. A homeowners' association will be formed concurrently with the recording of the final map. The homeowners' association would be responsible for the review of development plans of the lots within the subdivision prior to submittal of the building permit application within the city, meaning it's the HOA's responsibility to review architectural features that they deem that would be appropriate or desirable in this particular subdivision, color palette, landscaping, those kinds of things. Whereas, the city would be responsible for just enforcing the zoning code development standards such as setbacks, building heights, and the like. The HOA would be responsible for enforcement of any development standards that are developed by the HOA. The city does not enforce the CCNRs, but only those development standards contained in the zoning ordinance. Staff has reviewed the 27 conditions of approval and has suggested modifications to the CCNRs. Staff's review tables contains, attachment three in the staff report, shows the relevant conditions of approval and corresponding sections that are to be contained within the CCNRs. The recommended changes are summarized in the staff report and are minor in nature. There are seven of them. One is on page, small i, where it references Exhibit B, and so it's basically just to change the reference to call out the wildfire risk mitigation plan that was submitted with the CCNRs. On page, number two is on page two, second, section 1.6, and that's basically to modify the definition of architectural rules as follows. The architectural rule shall mean the rules and regulations adopted by the board pursuant to section 8.5 of this declaration. And then, the added portion shown as underlying is, the architectural rule shall not be in conflict with the city's municipal code, and where any conflict exists, the municipal code shall govern. So, there's nothing preventing from the CCNRs being more restrictive, they just can't be less restrictive than the zoning code. Number three, that's on page three, section 1.9, it's a very minor edit, we just added the word "and" in that sentence. On page three, section 1.13, another minor edit where we just included the word "the" between park and site perimeter. On, the fifth change is on page 21, that's section 5.7B. Grading plans for lots, prior to construction of a residence on a lot, a grading plan, we've added as defined by Title 8, Chapter 7 of the Placerville Municipal Code, for the lot, which includes guidelines for grading and tree preservation during construction, shall be submitted for the city for approval. Of course, it's that section of the, of the city code that specifies what's to be submitted with a, with a grading application. If, if the developer does mast pad grading, or actually pre-grades the, the site as they move forward with development of the infrastructure to support the lots, again, it's a 50 cubic yard threshold, then a grading permit wouldn't be required, but they would be subject to any, any grading or other requirements that the HOA may, may decide that they want to include that may be greater than the city's requirements. The sixth change is on page 21, that's section 5.8. We just, again, corrected the title of the, instead of saying fire safe plan, it's the wildfire risk mitigation plan. Declaring has caused a wildfire risk management plan and safe, fire safe exhibit to be prepared, which has been reviewed and approved by the Eldorado County Fire Protection District, instead of Fire Department, and the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. We've attached that as Exhibit B, which is attachment two of your staff report. Each owner shall be responsible for the implementation of the wildfire risk mitigation plan and fire exhibit, following the directives set forth therein. And of course, the HOA would be responsible for implementing, providing for defensible space on any of the common lots. Those are typically your lettered lots and the park lot. On page 33, section 7.1A, modify associate and maintenance areas follows, and we've added including, limited to centralized mail delivery units, park site, park site, perimeter drainage, detention basin, and open space areas, and the fencing and emergency access and gate located on lot D, and that's that area where there's an emergency access between the Estonia Estates subdivision and the county Placerville Airport. These CCNRs contained in staff's changes are provided in your staff report as attachment one. All the modifications are shown as underlying and strikeout. The conditions of approval are also provided in attachment four, for your reference. We do have a representative from New Phase Development, and there, she is available here for any additional questions that you may have. And with that, it, staff is recommending the planning commission approve the conditions, covenants, and restrictions as amended in attachment one, which also includes the Exhibit B provided in attachment two. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions of staff, by commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioner Keeney?
Pierre, when did they change the name from Placerville Estates to Estonia? And is there a way that we can, I don't know, maybe in our, our finding or something like that, make sure that there's a clear link? Or is that not a problem, that, you know, at one point when the, the map was first submitted to the city and the conditions of approval were made, it was called Placerville Estates? At least, that's what this document says. Now it's called Estonia. So, you know, 10 years from now, would that ever be a problem?
No, I don't see that to be a problem at all. I think it's, the developer can certainly change the name of their subdivision. I can remember my days in Eldorado County, subdivision names changed quite a bit. It's sort of interesting.
That's just something, administrative thing that you can do in your office to make sure that these things are all clearly linked and there's no, no concern, like I said, down the, down the road.
Yes, I would say the common thread is the file number, and that's tentative subdivision map 99, that's when it was submitted, 1999, dash O2, dash E2. And E2 means that it's been modified twice, and that was basically time extensions that were granted to the subdivision. And just for a little bit of history, I sat up there when this map first came to the planning commission. It's been that long, so I'm kind of happy to see this thing move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Carter?
I just have a quick, I, my brother has a lot that joins this, I'm just making the note, just.
Oh, as a disclosure?
As a disclosure, yeah.
Gotcha.
He's directly adjacent to this project, so.
All right, thank you for that disclosure. Any other questions by commissioners? I have a couple of questions, Pierre, and for the benefit of all commissioners, and particularly the new commissioners. So what exactly is the commission's purview scope, et cetera? Because it is that we are to review and approve these.
Yes, I would pay particular attention to the, to the table, where we actually identify the condition of approval, and then we identify where that condition of approval is located within the CCNRs, where it's required to be included.
Okay, and then, so on that then, on the very first item, and in covenants, conditions, and restrictions, section 5.8, my general question is, what's the enforcement mechanism for this? And consequences, too, for violations?
So the violations, so primarily, when you're talking about CCNRs, that is a civil or, or, it's a agreement between the subdivider, the developer, and the purchaser of the property. So the CCNRs are recorded, and so, for example, if somebody purchases a particular lot, they're then made aware that there's CCNRs that are included, that govern certain aspects of the subdivision. Sometimes CCNRs can get fairly detailed, like you must have a full two-car garage, or it provides for minimum, maximum size of the house, or certain pitch of the roof, or certain colors that may not, may or may not be permitted, those kinds of things. Or you can have other regulatory provisions, such as, no car will be left on the street after certain hour. We've all seen CCNRs that have those kinds of provisions. As I said earlier, the city, the city does not enforce the CCNRs, so it would be the homeowners' association that would take civil action against the property owner for not complying with the, with the conditions, covenants, and restrictions. And all that is spelled out, that process is spelled out within the CCNRs. And it was interesting to see, this developer utilized, I believe, the same law firm that prepared the CCNRs for the Cottonwood 4 and 6 subdivision, and that, those CCNRs went before you, oh gosh, what, three, four months ago, I, I believe, and so these are almost, almost identical.
Yeah, so I guess my question, so I understand the obligations of property owners and enforcement by the homeowners' association. Are there any aspects of this where the homeowners' association is accountable to the city for maintenance, particularly if anything related to the fire risk mitigation plan? Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it's not the end of Joe property owners, but actually the association as a whole? Are there any aspects where that occurs, and then, what is the mechanism to enforce and, and consequences?
Yeah, the mechanism for that would be how we enforce our fire safe regulations on all parcels now within the city. The city adopted, oh, I believe, maybe almost two years ago now, it's called the hazardous vegetation, I forget the, it has a, yeah, hazardous materials and vegetation ordinance. We have a, we have a whole ordinance that we enforce, where defensible space must maintain, trees must be limbed up, all of that. So this just specifies that those open space areas are the responsibility of the homeowners' association, so it would be the city taking enforcement action against the homeowners' association if it didn't comply with that section of, of the city municipal code.
And that would be a civil suit process if, if it came to that?
It would be an administrative process.
Okay, all right. I have one more question, but did you have a question on that?
Go ahead.
Okay, so my last question is, I'm looking at the attachment four, conditions of approval, I got down to B, and comply with the following engineering division requirements, and they have to provide a hydrology report for all on and off-site drainage system, and shall include effects and/or improvements. But I, it's unclear to me, so what's the result of, of this report? So if somebody comes out with a report, then what, you know, what's the mitigation?
Well, that report would be submitted to the engineering department. So, so the applicant is bonding for all the impro, for all the improvements to be done? You know, the, the, all the infrastructure, the roads, the sidewalks, curb, gutter, the water and sewer lines, and the drainage system. So, basically, the CCNRs are just applying some responsibilities of the homeowners' association to maintain some of those facilities once built. But as far as that particular condition of approval, those with all the improvement plans are subject to review and approval by the engineering department. They're going to prepare, or they have already prepared, cost estimates, and so the city and developer will enter into an improvement agreement, so they have a specified period of time to affect all these improvements, so that the curb, gutter, roads, sidewalks, streetlights, all of, all the like will be installed in accordance with the specs. And they will bond for those improvements.
The hydrology report is essentially dealing with, with water flows and conveyance, et cetera, and the engineering department's going to look at it, and if there's anything in there that needs to be addressed, mitigated, then that'll be a condition of approval from the engineering department. Is that right?
Right, and that's part of the final map process, not part of the CCNR process. And I believe that, that has already taken place, and the representative developer can probably more specifically answer that question for you, where they are in that process. Because basically, what Development Services is going to do, we're going to compile all the evidence that shows that all the conditions of approval have been complied with to the satisfaction of the city, bring a report to the city council, and it's basically just a, a ministerial approval, and then they can move forward.
Okay. Commissioner Keeney, you have a question?
I did. Back to the wildfire mitigation plan, has it been approved by the Fire Protection District?
It's my understanding it has.
Okay.
But we'll have to see evidence of that, that it's been approved by both.
So I didn't, I didn't see a memo or a stamp, you know, to make sure that it meets their standards, but that's, that will be taken care of in due course. So if the, this plan is deficient somehow, I mean, it reads well, I think it covers everything, but that will have to, the applicant will have to take care of that deficiency.
Absolutely, the applicant will have to take care of that when we take the final map to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
We have to say, we have to tell the city council they comply with all conditions. We can't say that they, well, accept this one or that one. Then, under the MAP Act, they really cannot approve the final map.
Okay, yeah, I was going to get there. All right, so, did you have a question?
I just have one thing that I noted, that I don't know when is appropriate time to say it, but on page 35, there's an open-ended quotation mark there that needs to be either deleted or closed. 7.2A.
We will not stand for that.
No.
7.2A, yes.
Yeah, if we could just add the quotes to close that, more than likely goes after walkway?
And that's on page?
Private roadway easement.
35.
35, 7.2A.
Right here.
Lot within the quote, private roadway easement.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, correct that.
We see it, yeah, thank you, good catch.
Okay, this, any other questions of commissioners, of staff? Okay, so this is technically not a public hearing, but I believe the public is, is allowed and should be encouraged to comment on this item, so I will go ahead and open this up for any members of the public that wishes to comment on this particular item, and then I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Fran, we would recommend that you.
Vice Chair.
Allow, Vice Chair.
I don't have those aspirations, for the record. No aspirations.
If you could allow the, the representative of the developer to speak to the item first, that would be great.
Okay, certainly, absolutely. So, we'll go ahead and ask, invite the representative for the association of the law firm, if that's who is coming to speak. You can let us know who you are. You're a representative, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, thank you. I'm actually a representative of New Phase Development, that's the development company that's putting forward the Estonia Estates project. So just to answer a couple of the questions that I know, you know, you guys have been discussing here. So for the fire safe plan, the wildfire risk mitigation plan, that was actually prepared by a registered forester, and so that plan will be finalized and stamped and signed off prior to the approval of the final map. And then, if there are any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
And then, so obligations that derive from that plan to the homeowner are part of the CCNRs, I presume, then, right?
They will be, so they're going to be overseen by the city and CAL FIRE, is my understanding, after reading the report and having a discussion with the registered forester. So it'll be overseen by CAL FIRE, and they'll determine the mitigation for how much shrubbery needs to be removed off the site, excuse me, and how much of the trees need to be removed, and what trees can be removed and cannot be removed.
Okay. Any questions of the representative? Thank you for attending, appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely.
Don't run out there, some questions could. Don't run out there, some questions could come up.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing that, I'll close the public discussion and bring it back to the commissioners for further discussion and action, hopefully recommendation of approval to staff. And just to note, the chair, the chair really hasn't, chair's satisfied with things as presented, so.
Then I'll, I'd like to move that we approve the CCNRs as amended with the one correction also that was noted by Commissioner Lepper, as recommended on our staff report.
So I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Go ahead, a motion, a second, further discussion. So our action for this will be to recommend approval to staff, right? And which will be forwarded on to council, I assume. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Do you need a roll call vote or is a voice vote sufficient? We'll do a roll call vote. Give Mr. Carter an opportunity to get his name under the record early on.
Right, yeah.
Show that he showed up.
Sounds good. Vice Chair Friend?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner List?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Okay, fantastic, so those are approved. Then we will then return back to item 9.1, recognition and appreciation of John List, our outgoing planning commission member. His absence is already being keenly felt. Staff has the report.
So we prepared for consideration by, by the planning commission, a resolution which Vice Chair Friend will certainly allow you to read it into the record. And we have a number, we have two copies here, we have an official copy that will go in our leather-bound binder for all resolutions that are approved by the commission. We also have a real nice version that we can give to Commissioner List. We also, and this is on behalf of staff, we do have a nice little certificate of recognition presented to John List. In grateful recognition of service to the city of Placerville as a planning commissioner beginning March of 2014 to February 2023, it's very nice, suitable for framing. But with that, I just want to say, Mr. List, you will be missed. You were such an important part of the planning commission for many, many years. You provided a very unique perspective, a technical perspective. You had your architectural background. I can still recall a number of, let's just say, very involved applications we had before the commission with respect to historic architecture or different things where you were able to really get to the root of the matter and provide, you know, an expertise of, of where the commission as a whole should go as far as considering an application. So with that, it's just been great having you on, on the commission and like I say, on behalf of staff and the city of Placerville, we're gonna, we'll, we'll miss you, but I think you're going, you're going to be leaving the state or going on some wonderful things, so, you know, we wish you the very best.
Now, I'd just like to echo what Pierre just said, and I found that your analytical inputs were really just amazing. There is the certificate of recognition and really made a very important contribution to the commission. And Pierre, you want me to read this resolution under the records? Is that what you said?
Yes, please do, and then we have two official versions for us to sign at the end of the meeting.
All right, great, so this is resolution number 23-01. City of Placerville Planning Commission Resolution of Appreciation to John List for his service as planning commission member. So whereas on March 4, 2014, the Placerville City Council appointed John List to serve on the Placerville Planning Commission, and whereas on April 1, 2014, John List attended his first planning commission meeting as a member, and whereas during his tenure on the planning commission, John List served as the chair of the commission in 2020 and again in 2021. And whereas John's technical background and experience, together with his interest in planning and dedication to serving his community, have been of great benefit in representing the residents of Placerville during his years on the planning commission. And whereas John held a strong commitment to understand the complex planning issues in order to make educated, informed decisions to enhance the environment and quality of the city, of all of the city. And whereas John has decided to retire from his duties as a planning commission, having served his last meeting on February 21, 2023, and having left his mark on the city of Placerville. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission does hereby officially express its sincere thanks, appreciation and gratitude to John List for his service on the Placerville Planning Commission on behalf of the residents of Placerville, California, passed and adopted this 21st day of February 2023, Michael Friend, Chair, Pierre Reavis, Executive Secretary. Is this the exact same thing you have?
Yes.
Okay, please look on the last, now therefore be it resolved, gratitude to John List for her service.
I can't tell you how many times and how many people pawed over this. My apologies, John.
And I, I apologize that I did not proof it before coming today. I saw, I said, oh yeah, of course, we're going to give John a resolution. So that will delay the signing.
Yes, it will.
You're going to have to come back to one more meeting?
Unless, of course, well, you know how it is nowadays.
One more meeting for John. But we can still, we can still give you a photo op. If there's anyone that wanted to do a photo op with a, with a very pretty-looking resolution, which is what I think you have, right Pierre?
Yes.
So we could still do that and a handshake and all that?
We can do that.
Because I see somebody with a camera and, so.
Do you need a motion?
To approve the resolution. Yes, I think that's appropriate.
It would be my honor to make that motion, that we adopt resolution number 23-01 as so wonderfully read by Vice Chair Michael Friend.
And I think it would be important to have a second on this most appropriately motioned resolution.
I will second that motion and echo the comments that we're really going to miss you and I really enjoyed serving with you.
And I'd also like to comment on, let's see, point number 1, 2, 3. John List served as chair of the commission in 2020 and 2021 when we went to Zoom meetings and he broadened his technical expertise to include that as well.
That might be something that, I think, that would be something to add since we have to make a change anyway, Mr. Reavis. That may not be a bad thing, because that, that really is a historically significant, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Well, let's modify this.
Because I think now's, now's the time. Oh, we have a motion, a second, and so I think discussion, this is a good opportunity for others to offer.
Friendly amendment to bullet point, or to whereas number three?
Yeah.
What would you like to say?
Uh, commit 2021, and in, in a, in a, in the time of, of a global pandemic.
And virtual meetings.
And, and the introduction and requirement that we, meetings were held virtually, okay? And I'll let staff come up with something even, you know, something along, if something better is needed, unless you like that.
It's going to be your signature on it, so I'll, I'll leave it at that. So to the effect of during the global pandemic and introduction of virtual meetings.
A reliance on, yeah, a reliance on virtual meetings to continue to conduct the business of, of the commission.
Okay, I accept that amendment to my motion to adopt.
Okay. So would you?
Similarly, I will accept that for my second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, fantastic. All right, so now, I don't know when you want to do the photo op, probably now, probably because I see some people that want to take pictures.
Sure, but before I forget, I wanted to let John know that, John, that, that paper certificate, we actually have a really nice wood one that's going to, we just weren't able to get it in time. So that's just a placeholder.
Thank you. May I?
Oh, please, sir, yes, please, please.
I was, I was afraid I would be in Alaska before you guys would get done with this.
It has been my privilege to serve with each one of you.
I have learned a lot. When I, when I was a teacher, I tried to impress upon my students to be involved, made opportunities for them to do that. When I retired, I thought, what can I do? And something caught my eye about the planning commission and I thought it was quite interesting that I started on April 1st.
I wasn't going to say anything about that.
Nine, nine years later, I am, I am honored to have served the city of Placerville and with you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your friendship and your expertise in, in making this a better community.
Thank you, John. It was great having you.
Can we take a break to do the photo?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a brief official break of business to get the photos taken care of and then we'll return. All right? And I don't know if you want photos with all the commissioners or?
You don't want this all?
You might want to. And then I think probably a handshake, maybe in front of the dais.
Why don't you go ahead and sign just in case?
Sure.
You want to see a signature, you know, we're going to fix it.
Happy to do that.
I read through it, I should have read that last.
And I modified when I was reading, I said, I ain't seeing that.
Things you don't see.
There goes your name tag. That was mine. That was Amy's.
Take him down.
Good job. Okay. Reconvene?
All right, we will go ahead now and reconvene. We are now on item 10, environmental assessments and public hearings. We have two items before us this evening. Item 10.1, site plan review, 23-01 Marshall Tesla backup energy storage system, consideration of an application for a site plan review to install two dimensions giving Tesla mega-pack outdoor battery energy storage system on a new concrete slab located at the rear of Marshall Medical Center. So and I believe, Kristen, you have the staff report for us? Thank you.
I do. So SPR 23-01 is a request from the applicant to install two Tesla mega-pack battery energy storage systems, each roughly 23 feet long, five feet wide and eight feet tall, within a staff-only parking lot located at the rear of Marshall Medical Center, Lot F. The project additionally includes installation of a new conduit, new meter and site controller, as well as disconnects on-site as described and shown in the applicant's submittal package, included as attachment one of the staff report dated February 21, 2023. The city has reviewed this request and has determined that it is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA Guidelines, Section 15303, in that the proposed project includes the installation of accessory electrical equipment to support the existing medical center. The proposed project is in line with the goals of the general planned land use designation and zoning for business professional as it is accessory to and would act in support of the existing permitted land use. The location within Lot F is not visible to nearby residences or from any public right-of-way. Additionally, this location is within an area of the medical center with existing mechanical equipment. Therefore, it is staff's opinion that screening of the equipment is not required. However, the use of bollards on three sides would provide protection for the new equipment. The installation of the mega-packs in Lot F would result in a loss of six staff parking spaces. Marshall Medical Center has proposed the addition of replacement staff parking in a nearby lot, Lot H. The medical center is currently in the process of removing temporary coaches within Lot H, approved under temporary mobile home permit 01-02. Resurfacing and adjustment of this lot would occur later in 2023. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the findings of fact in support of SPR 23-01, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Any of you report?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hunter. Questions of staff by commissioners?
I just had one question. In the staff report, it talks about a loss of six parking spaces. It's not, this is not a big deal, I just noticed the difference. And in the project description, it talks about a loss of four parking spaces.
Yes, that was, I did a calculation following the applicant's submittal.
Okay.
So it will be between four and six, but I believe it is six.
And they're made up for, but I just noticed the discrepancy there. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Good catch. Any other questions of commissioners, by, staff by commissioners? Commissioner Carter?
I guess I can get my feet wet on this one. So I walked the, the parking lot, Lot H, where the temporary coaches are being proposed to be removed. And I actually looked back at some of the, at the minutes for the meetings on the conditional approval for those and so it, it appears that they're all still currently occupied, lights are on, there's people in the buildings. Do we, do we have, is there, I guess I'm uncomfortable with replacing parking spots in this project with a promise instead of an actual concrete, I mean, the permit hasn't been pulled, it hasn't been approved, you know, and the work hasn't started, so if I could get some clarity on that possibly?
Sure, so we have actually been in communication with Marshall and have met with them on a variety of different projects, including Lot H. Temporary, the, the permit, the temporary mobile home permit actually expired in December, so the process of removing the coaches is taking a little longer. So I believe, we actually have some people who can discuss that, the applicants, but I believe they are scheduled to be removed March. So, and then we, we are anticipating a application, a site plan review for their parking lot.
That's good effort on your part, Commissioner, and then so when the representative comes up, please feel free to follow up with that. Any other questions of, of staff by commissioners? Okay, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll invite the representative to come and I think there's probably a few questions for you. Introduce yourself, you can describe the project and then we'll go from there. And the members of the public will also be invited to comment. Thank you.
Evening. Oh, well. Did someone hear me?
Sir, no, I had to turn your microphone on.
Okay.
There you go.
Good evening. Congratulations, Commissioner, on your tenure. Yeah, so the, you want me just to address the question or do you want me to explain the project?
You can, your choice, you can start with the.
So we're, we're adding a Tesla mega-packs, two, two mega-packs to our site, which will help us in two ways, so when we have a power outage with PG&E, it gets us four hours before we have to kick over to the emergency generators that are powered by diesel. The other benefit it gives us is peak, peak hour shaving during the summer. So it, we do get benefits from it. Regarding the Lot H and the coaches that are, yes, the coaches are there, they are no longer occupied. There may be lights on inside, but there's nobody home. Sorry, I can't resist. And I know, I'm not involved in it, but there is an effort underway to actually move the coaches off-site and I can't give you an exact date. And I've met with both Kristen and Pierre on Lot H. I have, I have a set of plans that are ready to submit. I had a question regarding a variance, actually removing a couple planters to get me more parking spaces, but the plans will be submitted. I've got, I'm getting numbers on construction costs and it, it will happen this year. As far as, and the coaches have to be gone before I can do the project, so I don't know if that puts you a little bit more at ease. I understand, I haven't been at Marshall, I've been there a little over a year, but I understand there's a little bit of, around the coaches. parking spaces, but the plans will be submitted. I've got, I'm getting numbers on construction costs, and it will happen this year. As far as, and the coaches have to be gone before I can do the project, so I don't know if that puts you a little bit more at ease. I understand, I haven't been at Marshall, I've been there a little over a year, but I understand there's a little bit of, around the coaches, so we're trying to get them off the site.
All right. Any additional information you wish to provide?
No, it's like stated, it's not visible. I don't think it'd be a visibility issue on this item. We're just looking for approval to go ahead and proceed with the project.
Any questions of the representative from commissioners? I do have a couple of questions, and you may or may not know the answers to these. The batteries themselves, do you know what they are constructed of, or they're comprised of?
I know they have lithium in them, but I don't know the complete...
Okay, so they're lithium, they're lithium-based batteries.
I believe they are, yes.
And then, what's the approximate lifespan? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I think that depends on use, how much they're charged, discharged.
Okay. And recyclability or reusability?
I don't know, but right now, if they're similar to their car batteries, there's not much.
Okay.
But I don't know that.
And then, the last one, and this may be just totally off-base, but any kind of hazards, fire slash explosion, I mean, we hear a lot about lithium batteries in particular, and on airplanes, we hear a lot about that happening, so, and maybe the fire marshal can speak to that item, but what do we know about the hazard component of these?
I think he's asking you.
For the record, clarification, I'm not the fire marshal, I don't even pretend to be on TV.
Sorry, that came out without thinking. My apologies.
But any of these plans and applications, they'd be reviewed by our Fire Prevention Bureau to make sure that all the adequate resources are in place to ensure that there's a safe operation, and I don't have the details either on the engine analysis, but there are...
It's already been submitted to the fire.
Okay, but we don't have any, we don't have any idea about the propensity. I haven't heard of it, but we do hear about lithium batteries causing problems, and so I think it's just something to be aware of.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we mitigate it with fire review, and the plan went through the Office of Statewide Planning, so it's not just, you know, we're trying to shove something through the...
No, no, sure, no, no insinuation whatsoever. I don't know if it required like, okay, I'll step out of my technical expertise safety box here, and say like a halogen suppression system or something, you got to have something there in case the battery goes off, as opposed to waiting for the department to be called, to be like an automatic suppression thing? Do you have any idea?
I know that those, there are fire code regulations, I'm not prepared to speak specifically to it, but those will all be reviewed by our Prevention Bureau to make sure all the necessary things are in place.
I guess the good answer is there are regulations that deal with this, and we're following them, right?
That's right.
Okay.
I'll just say that I think that's a really relevant question, because I know that they do take exorbitant amounts of water to put out upon ignition, and my husband's a firefighter, and from what I understand, at a very high level, of my understanding is there's development of tools to address those kinds of fires, such as, I think he was talking about things that go over, like a blanket, you know, if you will, that tries to...
I know they present a special circumstance.
So I think that that probably in time will be strengthened.
Okay.
That would be my assumption anyway, because I know that it's not a, it's not a non-issue.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I don't think we have any more, we do, here we go.
What's your timeline on the project? When do you expect this to be installed and completed?
Well, so the state review's already been approved, and then as we got more involved in it, the state fire, or the Fire Life Safety Officer, I should say, from OSHPOD, now HKA, requested the plans, or required the plans to go through the local jurisdiction in addition to the state review. So that set us back, I'm guessing, the actual construction time's probably going to be like four or five months, but we need to get a local approval first before we can proceed. Now, we already have state approval, we just need local approval now, so I, if I had to take a wild guess, it'll probably get started sometime late March.
And that's also related to the removal of the coaches?
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with that, I just, kind of a cart before the horse scenario here, is there a compelling reason why this has to be done before that parking issue is mitigated? I just wondered if that's a timing issue on that, if it has to be done.
No, the two, the two aren't really linked right now on any timeline or schedule right now, no. Lot, you're talking about the Lot H and replacement of the parking spaces and the removal of the coaches compared to the...
Right, does this have to be done before that parking issue is mitig, do we have to take the parking spots before they're replaced, I guess is my question? Is there a compelling reason why that has to be done before the parking issue is mitigated?
Has to be done? No. And the only reason I bring that up is because that's where the different places, the plans are, right? So the plans have been approved to move forward, and obviously there's a time restriction. Once you have a permit, you have to move forward, so, and then I have the set of plans to come into the city, city...
Engineer apparently.
Yeah, the city for review for the approval of the parking lot H, which should happen shortly, and then, and then it comes down to the coaches physically being removed.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? I'll go ahead and open it up to any members of the public that wish to comment on the Seeing no rush to the podium, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. As the chair, this seems like a very logical and needed thing and beneficial, notwithstanding some of the issues that we discussed, so. Any other items or questions, or someone feeling like they're willing to make a motion on the project?
I'd like to make a motion. I agree with you, Vice Chair Friend, that this is a needed and good project, so I will move that we take the recommended actions listed in the staff report, starting on page six. Adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings of fact in support of SPR 2023-01, including that it's, the request is exempt from environmental review. There's three more findings of fact. Conditionally approve the site plan review 2023-01 for 1100 Marshall Way, covering the project description, project location, site plan review expiration, that this would become null and void 18 months after the date of approval, and there are a total of nine conditions listed in the staff report.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? The chair would note only that it's being approved with no modifications, and the concerns as raised by Commissioner Carter are known to staff, and they are working with the applicant for resolution, so that is not necessarily, it won't be a hanging issue for them, even though the permits expired for the coaches. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote, please. Vice Chair Friend? Aye. Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Commissioner List?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
The motion passes, approval is granted, there's a 10-day repeal, appeal process, I presume, right?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item 10.2, site plan review 23-02, the Marshall ambulance canopy. This is consideration of an application for a site plan review to construct a canopy covering the existing ambulance parking spaces and loading transportation route into Marshall Medical Center. And Kristen, I believe you have the report?
I do.
Thank you.
So before providing a summary and recommendations for SPR 23-02, staff would like to mention that there is an error in the staff report on the bottom of page eight. Staff will strike out the first sentence under conclusion and replace it with the following. As proposed, the request would result in a minor modification to the existing building through the addition of the ambulance canopy. The revised language was provided to you in a printout before the meeting. So SPR 23-02 is a request from the applicant to construct an approximately 2,200 square-foot canopy, covering the existing ambulance parking spaces and transportation route into the emergency department that would protect paramedics and patients from the elements. Landscaping and paving would be patched following completion of construction. The city has reviewed this application and has determined that it is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA Guidelines, Section 15303, in that the project includes the installation of an accessory structure to support the existing medical center. The proposed project is in line with the goals of the general planned land use designation and zoning for business professional as it is accessory to and would act in support of the existing permitted land use. The ambulance canopy will be constructed using materials and architecture similar to that of the existing medical center. Additionally, the canopy will be painted to match the existing medical center. As proposed, lighting will be included on the underside of the canopy for nighttime illumination. Marshall prepared a photometric light level plan for the proposed lighting, which is included in the applicant's submittal package, attachment one of the staff report. The edge of the canopy is within 150 feet of residences located on Gold Street and Goian Avenue, with the rear of the closest house on Goian overlooking the canopy. As such, staff recommends the inclusion of a condition of approval requiring shielding, which is currently included as condition of approval number three. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the findings of fact in support of SPR 23-02, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That's the end of the staff's recommendations.
Thank you very much for that report. Any questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Carter?
So, there seems to be, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring it up, but...
I'll let you know.
Okay, there seems to be a couple of errors in regards to, maybe it was just a copy and paste, but the battery backup system is referenced on page nine in the action. Proposed project would include installation of new electrical equipment accessory to the, so it looks like maybe some of the backup battery storage language made it into this...
Page nine of the staff report.
Under one and three, it looks like there's some references to the battery backup system in here.
Sorry, page?
Page nine of the...
Yes, staff has noted. Yes. Thank you.
Oh, I see it, I found it now, thank you. There it is.
Yeah, there's two, the last sentence of item number one and the entirety of item number three there. Looks like I got some copy and pasting.
Any other questions or comments by, I'm sorry, any other questions of staff by commissioners? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public, we'll start with the applicant. I don't know if anyone has any questions for you. I'll say for the record that having brought many a patient into Marshall as a firefighter paramedic back in the day, would have really liked to have had a canopy back then, it's never pleasant for the patient or the medics, when it's raining and what else, so, good move on this. So anything you want to offer to the project, sir?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and like you say, it's long overdue, really, to protect, I mean, there's nothing worth, I can't imagine something being worse than pulled out of the back of an ambulance and being hit by snow or rain, or in 110-degree heat, right?
It's miserable, miserable.
Yeah, so...
Any questions of the applicant by commissioners? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Chair recognizes Mr. Smith, who will be a future commissioner. How are you, sir?
Thanks for the warning. Well, there's a couple occasions, Mr. Friend, when I've also been back there by the loading dock and noticed paramedics coming in, when there have been two or more ambulances waiting to make their deliveries. And on one occasion in particular, I noticed it was raining and cold, it just seemed very odd. However, my reason for being there was a distraction, but that's why it seems long overdue. I only come forward for one reason, and that's to commend this important institution, because I've had exposure myself and my family to Marshall's medical services almost not long after it opened up. High school ruptured, playing, great way to know what that place can provide. And then my parents, as they got older, and I'll tell you, it happens to anybody, as you get older, there's more and more reasons to come there. It was true for both of them. It's kind of like if the ER was an airline, they could have gotten frequent flyer miles long ago. And the services they provided consistently throughout all that time was truly exceptional, and to agree with tremendous compassion and professionalism. Also, they have a great food service in the back, that is unusually good, but that's why, so I am glad to return the favor and see you do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to comment on this project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. Oh, not your final motion, sir?
I think you could.
I make a motion that we approve, SPR 2023-2, as stated in the staff report, making the staff report part of the public record.
And updating the language.
Yeah, and updating the language, that was on page nine.
Two, one, and two, three.
Two, one, and...
One, and two, three, to be relevant to the project.
Yep. Okay.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And then, to staff, you're clear on the changes in the staff report, which need to be updated and subsequently reflected in the minutes?
Yes, there's basically, just to reiterate, we're going to modify the staff report, the conclusion in the staff report to read that it's in reference to the ambulance canopy. We will also modify the planning commission recommended findings, roman numeral two, one and three, we will just replace new electrical equipment with ambulance canopy.
Yep, correct. Again, the chair would like to thank Mr. Carter for catching those. If there's no additional discussion, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote, please. Sorry.
I'm sorry, who seconded this?
Mr. Carter.
Vice Chair Friend? Aye. Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Commissioner List?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Motion carries, there's a 10-day appeal process. Thank you very much. That brings us to item number 13, matters from commission, correct?
Did we have continued items?
We have no, I'm sorry, continued items of which we have none, I believe, correct? Thank you for that catch. It was very... Item 11 is concluded, bring us right to item 13, matters from commissioners and staff, 13.1, staff reports. Anything from staff?
We have no staff reports at this time, thank you.
And it looks unlikely that we will have certainly the March 7 meeting, and possibly the, whatever that, the second meeting would be. I will not, I personally will not be available for the second meeting in March, so if you have a meeting, I won't be here. You'll need to get a vice vice chair. And then we will look at April. We can have Commissioner Smith be joining us, it'd be great, and then we will, when we know we all have all five members, we can do our election of officers. Okay, planning commission matters, anything from fellow commissioners? Again, welcome to Commissioner Carter, welcome to Commissioner Keeney for her return, and welcome to Commissioner Smith for his upcoming appointment. With that, we'll move to adjourn at approximately, what, 7:10? 7:08 PM.
7:08.
Thank you very much.